So, there we go. Now we're live.
Tara, you do the roll call, please. Joni Stafford here.
Alexis Rude here.
Amy Barber here.
Jeff Powers here.
Thank you. Presentation approval of the minutes from the June 9 regular council meeting. Those were emailed to everybody on board, council. Any questions? Or?
I'll make a motion to approve the, is it the minutes?
Yeah.
Minutes is, is written.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I said all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was going to protest.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Approval of the claims, counts payable registered, June bank rec and bank account balances. Those also were emailed to us. Any questions or concerns for Tara? There are none. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Motion on the floor. I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Department reports. Steve was off for the last two weeks, so he doesn't have any updates for today. And we have the street department report in front of us. Everybody have any questions for Cody? He's standing in the back.
He's back there. All the new meters in?
Yeah.
All the radio receivers are, have been installed.
Yeah. Is that true? Then we have extra for the ones that break.
I think it was like three bobs, but...
Was that one of their things installed finally?
The inlet meter?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't remember how to say that.
Inlet?
Inlet.
Yes, it was installed.
But there's a fluid, an inlet.
Yes, it's the in.
Okay.
It was installed out by the lagoons on June the 5th.
Okay.
And it's working as it should be.
Good.
All right. Alexis, you want to give the parks and community center updates?
Oh, yeah. Park Board, we got our new bins up around the pickleball court. We just have one more thing to do. We get, we got solar lights to go in the middle. The park board purchased one and then the Masons are purchasing the other one and they're going to install both of those. We met with the DNR last week. That project's going to finish up in October, so you're going to see a switch. I'm going to put something out. That, all that huge equipment's going to be coming out. You're going to see smaller equipment go in, lots of trucks, lots of gravel. They're going to be doing like the finer details. And they're going to be doing a little work for us. There's a new, new parking in front of the pickleball court. Gravel smoothed out, that's from them. And that's just one of the many things in our agreement that we worked out with them to stage out of the mud bogs instead of bonding out the roads and then taking all that heavy equipment on our streets. Some of them newly paved. That equipment would do very well there, so, you know, we've worked out to deal with them there. So we got some exciting things coming there, so keep your eyes out. We had a workday a little ways back, so lots of improvements there. We just started finishing up a grant to resurface our basketball court and get some new goals. We need one more quote for resurfacing the, the court. So I'm just having a hard time getting someone to actually show up and do that. So if you know someone that does resurfacing, you can message our Facebook page or talk to me afterward. My phone number's on the Facebook page and our email. The community center?
The one down there by the community center?
Uh, no, we're doing the one. Yeah, by the shelter. We've been really trying to focus on that, everybody's shelter house right now. The community center, we, our tarps, we've put the tarps down, so we've been able to have more rentals with the bounce houses and tables and chairs on the floor. We're finishing up a grant there for new tables and chairs because the ones we have are really kind of heavy and the new ones would be like the plastic light pipes are easier to move in and out. We've started remodeling the small banquet room downstairs. If you've seen it, our large banquet room was kind of completed in the last couple of years. It's got a new floor, new paint, the lighter tables and chairs, it's a lot nicer. The smaller banquet room is nice, but it's got like, the carpet's really old and dirty. And so a lot of people, when they see it, they don't want to rent it because it's just kind of yucky.
In there, I don't know how else to explain it, so...
We've got new paint on the walls, new receptacle covers. We started taking the carpet out. We plan to put a little kitchen in there, dent it to the outside, like just a little stove and sink. And then we want to redo the floor. And so I think that's later on the agenda. I'll ask people for some funds for that, but I think that's it. Bye. Oh, we did start, we sold some bobs for seniors only. So if you're 62 and over and you live in town and you want to buy a bob and walk in the gym, you can use the gym to walk.
Or practice your slam dunks.
Or practice your slam dunks. So if you're interested in that, you can talk to me or we have another Facebook page that was on the community center. But we're just doing seniors right now and senior couples because we've got some, just some things we're testing out. Before we just, we don't always open the floodgates to everybody before we test some things. So the seniors only right now, we're going to see how that goes and I'm going to work out some bobs and then hopefully we can open it to memberships to everybody, families and couples and everything. So that's kind of exciting. Seniors only, 62 and over if you want to do that. There is a cost, but it's not high. Any other questions or comments for seniors?
So that'll be...
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Animal control, Bill, do you have any updates?
No, just I've been chasing a lot of dogs lately.
Okay.
Did about 13 of them since July the 4th.
Thirteen dogs or thirteen calls?
I bet thirteen calls, about dogs. Multiple, the same dog or same family dog or whatever. Been a lot of them.
What's happening with, are you catching them? I mean, what's...
Well, some of them I'm catching, paying them back to them. Some of them, like disappeared. So the majority of them is going back because there's only room for down there for one dog. So sometimes I get three calls in a day, four calls in a day. I caught all four of them, didn't take them back because people owned them. And we'd have them overloading the dogs in one facility that I have. Because we're not allowed to put anything on ground anymore. So it's concrete on one side and ground on the other.
Okay.
Is that what the, like, package says? Can we get them down there?
Yeah, let's see more. Yeah. Okay. Counsel? Comments?
I don't want the dog. If you have a, Bill, if you have a person that their dog is continually getting out?
Yes, it do.
Then we need to put that one down there. They need to be paying a fine, especially if their dog is getting out and like killing cats and stuff. They need to be fined.
The fine's not going to take care of the problem. It's not enough.
It's a start. Do we need to rework?
Yes, I don't know.
Do we need to rework the ordinance so that if it's attacking pet, other pets? That...
Well, that's an issue too, just has come up again here in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, well, we will work at addressing that. We'll work on changing that, but right now, the next time that dog is out, it goes to the pet pound thing. It goes into the fence.
Okay.
What's the first fine?
What's, what's the standard procedure, Bill, that you use to, when you catch one?
For a long time, I'd take it back so that the town don't have the cost because sometimes they don't come and get them. They're there for me to try to figure out what to do with them.
But I mean, is there, do you make contact with the owner?
Oh, yeah.
And, and is there some sort of...
Even if I don't catch them, sir, I still go to the owner if I know who the owner is.
Is there a fine though from the ordinance?
I think there's, depending on if the dog's fixed or not, it's three and five.
Three dollars and five dollars?
The dog tag that you get and then it's five dollars a day, I think, for me keeping it down there.
Kind of more than that. It's fifteen for, if you want to buy a lifelong thing.
Lifetime?
Lifetime, it's fifteen because I bought those for my dogs, so...
The last conversation that Joni and I had with Chris was there was to go around town and try to see how they felt about dog tags. Well, I've done that.
Well, it doesn't matter how they feel about it.
Well, I mean about, you know, coming and getting them for dog tags.
Yeah.
No, I haven't gotten a good response from that. They don't feel like they should have to buy dog tags to have a dog in town.
Well, that's the ordinance and that's been in place for several, several...
Long time.
Yeah, I mean, long before we came along.
That's how they all suddenly feel, right?
Yeah. Well, we...
Just to get them to come up here and get it on their own?
We've been needing...
That's not going to happen.
We've been needing to revamp the animal ordinances for a while. We talked about raising some of the fines to make it a little more deterrent for somebody to let their dog run loose. There's a lot of things that we need, that we need to do. And I, I did have some conversations with Christie recently about sitting in on that conversation to, to discuss some of the cats, the, the cat community that we currently have. If anybody else is interested in being a part of revamping that ordinance or giving any input on that, please reach out to me. And...
Those dog tags, they don't last. I bought a lifetime one.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, they're too flimsy.
Oh, we'll get you another one.
Especially if you have big dogs like you.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't, they don't last.
We'll get you, we can get you another one.
If you made a, if you, we'll have proof of it and then we'll just give you a new number and then just write a note on the receipt. All we need to do is to make a spreadsheet of those so that you can have one out in the field.
There's a list up here of lifetime. There's a list of the ones that have gotten their tags during the year.
Yeah.
They're only just for the year. Some people don't realize that they...
I can't, I can't remember if I bought the lifetime or the year.
Any person who creates or maintains a nuisance prohibited and who fails or refuses to evade such nuisance as required by the notice given shall be fined a sum of $50. Each day the nuisance continues after the date of the notice shall be deemed a separate offense, which is continually may be assessed instead of or addition to the enforcement provisions.
Is that the town ordinance or the state?
I'm on the town. I'm on the towns. Yeah, sorry, I just...
It's kind of written, it's kind of broken, so it's, we need to do the whole thing.
Okay, so if we catch an untagged dog, first time you get it out is $10. Second time you get it out, $30. Third time you get it out, you got to pay $75.
Well, see, that, one thing with that, there's two things with that. First of all, you have a nuisance dog and you have a dog that doesn't have a tag. So that's two separate fines that they would be getting. So that's something we need to make sure we're doing too. If you kept a dog, if it doesn't have a tag, then take it up there, whatever. We need to make some more fence, I guess.
Your fee cannot, you know, exceed $100 totally.
Okay.
And those, I mean, those fees and fines, we can turn around to build, if we need more, why don't you know what you call it? Storage space? We can, we can, yeah, we can use that money for that. So the, I mean, these are important things. And, I mean, as far as the tags go, whether a citizen or a resident is in favor of it or not, doesn't really matter. It's, it's required. So, you know, we need to...
Follow the rules that are in place. If you want to assist us with, when we rewrite, rewrite the ordinance, we'll be glad to invite you to come up and meet with us.
Yep.
This even says owners, keepers and/or those that harbor a dog may be assessed appropriate fees incurred for the enforcement implementation of this checker. However, and in addition, owners, keepers and/or those that harbor a male dog, now while not on his property without permission, if it pregnancies a female dog, may be responsible for the cost of euthanizing unwanted puppies from that reproductive event. I'd say this, well, that's from 2009.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, these are not...
Right.
One thing I do want to bring up, and, and we're going to have time for patron concerns at the end. I know there's some people that have signed up that have some concerns about this. That's why I asked for volunteers or anybody that want to be a part of rewriting that ordinance. The current ordinance, when it talks about vicious dogs, a vicious dog is only considered vicious if it bites a person.
That's not true.
On our ordinance.
I know, but I mean, in reality, that's not true.
But in our ordinance...
It can bite another dog or it can bite another cat.
But our, our, our current ordinance only states it's only vicious if it bites a person.
I think the state of Indiana has a different ordinance. I don't know if that would cover in the, or Winslow since that's Indiana.
We could take it into, we'll, we'll pull...
We have to make it so it matters.
Yeah, we'll pull everything and, and read through that. Because if that's, if that needs to be updated, then we need to update that.
But it also says the definition of vicious animal includes, but is not limited to.
Limited to.
Says not limited to.
Not, that's what I said.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be a person?
Yes.
It definitely is a person. If it's, yeah, so it's just, definitely that's just if it's a person.
But it could be limited, not limited, which we can reword it to be more specific.
It's very, I found that a lot of these ordinances are very vague to understand. It's like, where are they coming from?
I mean, it's, and it's to the point where I don't know what used to be done in Winslow, but, I mean, if we keep continuing to get dogs in and they don't come for them and we can't find home for them, we'll have to work something out with another shelter to start euthanizing. I mean, we can't, we can't support every animal in the town with taxpayer money just because owners aren't responsible.
That's right.
So...
That's why the fines, we make the owners more responsible.
I hate that. I mean, I've got three cats in my house and I love my dog and, but, I mean, we can't do that. So we will work on trying to get a committee together where we can sit down and meet and discuss some of these ordinances and try to come up with some solutions.
For the animal, what you're working on.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
Joni, I have actually a few things I forgot to put myself on you.
I can't hear you.
She's got something to say.
Oh. Tara? Oh, town hall updates, Tara?
Won't we go any more further?
Yeah.
I do need to send the ordinance out to this one family in town. So it used to be Amy, I tell her and then she had to make sure the ordinance got out, whether Steve handled it or whatever.
Yeah.
Is that still the way we're doing it or has that changed?
You can go through Tara.
Sometimes Tim can take care of that stuff.
Go through Tara.
Go through Tara.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have the townwide dumpsters available, the 18th through the 25th.
Of July.
Of July. There'll be two dumpsters over behind the community center. So I wanted to remind everyone of that. I also got an email last week. We are scheduled for an audit for '21, '22, '23 and '24. So they should be coming within the next month or so.
So that's state border accounts?
Yes.
So...
And then, and hopefully once we get through that '24, it will help us with like some of our funding options as well because a lot of them won't even consider funding if we don't have a favorable audit that's present. And then also I just had a meeting with our Department of Local Government Finance representative today for our 2026 budget. Our numbers are, are looking really, really good in comparison to previous years. So he told me for our general, which state border, yeah, state border camps, Department of Local Government Finance only cares about general. They don't care about water or wastewater. But as far as general goes, even if we use all of our money for this year and all of what we have estimated for next year, we'll still have a $20,000 cash reserve, which is amazing in comparison to when I started. So that was good news I felt like needed to be shared.
When we first started, we didn't, we didn't even know if we could spend money on a case of coffee paper.
So I just wanted to know, there'll be a lot of people in and out in the next month or so with budget and with the audit. So if you see random people around, that's why.
Okay. Thank you.
By the way, I wanted to say that the town hall looks really nice and she repainted it, took the wallpaper down. It was, had those, falling down because it had those carpenter ants. So it looks very nice. Appreciate all the work you guys did.
All right. On to old business. Water project update. We have in our presence Josh Hood and Dean Rogers here from Westland Engineering. Want to give everybody an update on the results of the application to SRF for funding for our drinking water projects. Josh?
Sir, anywhere you want me?
You can come up here by Alexis, it's your bike.
You got to project though, if you're down to that end.
Yeah, you can.
Project your voice.
So we submitted a preliminary engineering report for the town of Winslow for water system improvements. We've had a couple of meetings about it, had a public hearing about it as well, looking at getting the, the old water lines replaced, the ones that keep breaking, as well as they do water tower. Submitted that to SRF or the Indiana Finance Authority in April. Recently, we've heard back from them. They've released their project priority list. You know, this year they got, owes over 100 applications. 94 of them were scored and ranked. Unfortunately, Winslow scored 36th out of 94. However, the 35 before that all include lead service lines and treatment facility improvements, getting some of these contaminants out of the, the drinking water. So silver lining, you don't have those problems. But for just the, the distribution and the storage improvements, the town of Winslow was number one in that aspect. So I think it was a good project to submit. SRF can only give out so much money every year. This year, only the top nine projects were awarded in the fundable range. And that fundable range amount was $70 million. So those top nine are going to have to split $70 million. For a lot of them, it might not cover everything, but that's kind of where they, they draw the line. So the scorecard, which you guys have, you know, I'd heard before, getting started that there's, you know, you scored zero in, in certain places. That's kind of a good thing. You're not under any IDM compliance issues. You don't have known contaminants in your water system. You don't have lead service lines. And those are the big, the big scoring items with, with the SRF, especially this year. So that's why there are zeros there, but everywhere else that you could have scored points, you did very well. Didn't have any deductions, which is good. But since Winslow doesn't have a water treatment plant, you know, you've already kind of regionalized with Pike Gibson. It kind of narrows some of the points possible to be earned. Kind of cuts that down a little bit, but overall, I know it's not the, the outcome that we were looking for, but overall, I, I think it was a good project to submit. I think the town did very well. I appreciate the town's help with getting this together. And that's just, you know, the, the SRF, the, the state withholding fund through the Indiana Finance Authority. There are other opportunities out there for funding. I'll let Dean get on that, he knows more about that than I do. But any other questions about the, the scoring, the scorecard, the project itself?
Where can you apply for that again? Next year or...
You can apply for it again next year.
Is it once a year or twice a year? I thought they did it in the spring and the fall.
Once a year.
Okay.
April 1st every year. The, why you would want to apply again is if you, if you're making changes to like, you don't want to keep applying with the same, same exact project over and over. I mean, there's a chance that you'll, you might score higher. There's a chance that you might move up that, that ranking list, but if you're doing the same thing over and over, you're probably going to stay in roughly the same place. If there's any other improvements, you know, hopefully you don't get an IDIM compliance order. You know, that would bump you up, but that also comes with having the compliance order.
It's just not one's enough.
Yeah. So any other questions about that?
Is Dean going to talk?
Yeah. Dean was going to talk about...
Happy to, yeah. So as Josh said, Dean Rogers with Westland Engineering, as Josh said, you know, they only funded or, or scored about 10% of the projects within their fundable range. So what does their fundable range mean? It means you have access to subsidized interest rate dollars. And if you have access to their subsidized interest rate dollars, you also can potential get, potentially get what they call additional subsidization, a fancy word for some grand dollars. So ideally, that's where Winslow would like to have found themselves, but unfortunately it's not. Doesn't mean you can't accomplish a project. It just means it's, you have tougher funding options available to you. So want to be careful. So I, I used to be a financial advisor. I did rate studies. I assisted communities with issuing bonds. I was a registered municipal advisor. I'm no longer any of those things. I'm a CPA, but I'm not a registered municipal advisor. And I can't, I can talk to you about what your funding options are. I can't make recommendations that should be done by your municipal advisor. There are other options on the table. I know in the past, Winslow has worked with USDA rural development. So rural development remains an option for you. The Indiana Bond Bank has a program that you can participate in. That's, they package projects together, issue one bond in the background that funds projects for multiple communities. You can still participate with SRF. SRF will be reaching out in the coming weeks to see if you have any interest in participating in their pool financing program. So their pooled financing program is very similar to the bond bank's program where they will pull multiple projects from multiple communities together, issue bonds to support those projects and then distribute the funds to you. Nice thing about that is they're issuing bonds at the state's AAA credit rating. So you get a better interest rate than you could achieve on your own should you go out and try to issue bonds on the open market on Winslow's credit. See, so we talked about SRF pooled, Indiana Bond Bank kind of does a pooled rural development. That's about it. You know, there's, you can issue bonds on the open market. Winslow's not going to be a great credit for those folks out there that are, that are wanting to buy bonds on the open market. So I wouldn't recommend that path. What's that? Cash balances, lack of a current audit. I know that's being worked on. There's, there's numerous issues that, that would not be great for you. So there's another program that used to be Kentucky specific, but it's now opened up to the country, the Rural Water Loan Fund. They'll do a similar thing like we've talked about with other projects where they'll pull multiple projects together for various communities to do a financing. So happy to assist you down that path, you know, even if that means, I know, you know, rates are a big thing, right? We've had a big rate increase. We're trying to minimize any additional rate increases from, from future improvements. So that's got to be part of the consideration. So, you know, we, we can have discussions with you all, with Josh. You know, Josh can help you prioritize. Do we need to do all of this? Are there things of what we've submitted that we should consider prioritizing? And then happy to be involved in discussions with your financial advisor to see, you know, what is the appropriate path to go down.
So what you're saying is we could say, well, we really want to change the, the water pipes on this one street. We could do that first and then do some of the others later on. Is that, that kind of what you mean in prioritizing?
That's right. You know, I, I think, and Josh correct me if I'm wrong, but I think some of your old cast iron pipes is, is probably your biggest priority where you have, you know, more frequent breaks and... I know it gets expensive to deal with those breaks. You know, the bad side, it's great to be able to take care of everything once, you know. That way, if you if you do a financing, you're only paying the professional team once. You know, splitting it up, trying to get that done. You know, if you go through that process two or three times over the years, you're paying those professionals two or three times. But I know people can only deal with so much and afford so much when it comes to rates. So we'll have to pick and choose what those priorities are and try to figure out what makes the most sense to get done.
So the P E R that we have through you guys was SRF specific? These other options that you mentioned, the bond bank, USDA require different P E Rs? And we would have, would we have to tweak and?
Rural developments.
You can tweak it a little bit.
Tweak a little bit.
They've gotten a lot better about.
Trying to make them similar.
Making them similar.
Yeah. The other programs don't require a P E R per se.
The pooled bond?
Right. So, I mean, I think we could get by with what we've got and say, hey, this is the aspect of this P E R we're gonna focus on getting done. So.
Okay, that makes sense. All right. Thank you, Dean. We appreciate you guys coming. Thank you.
All right, we're going on to the wastewater project update. We did have a crew in town this past week doing more CCTV monitoring in our sewer lines. We should have our engineering report for the wastewater very soon, based on the video that they have taken. And we will be submitting to USDA for funds for that project in September. And we'll see what happens. Just like with the drinking water. I did just, just want to throw this out there too. After not scoring where we wanted to necessarily on the SRF, Tara and I did meet with our state senator this past week too and discussed concerns that we have, just that program in general. And had a really good meeting. He's, he's gonna make some calls and try to see if he can get any more information for us. So I just wanted everybody to know that we did have that that meeting with him. All right. Okay, the block grant, OPA block grant update for the preliminary, or I'm sorry.
Are we doing C D B Gs?
That's what I'm talking about. That's the community development block grant update through OPA that we applied for for the second time for the funds to do a new comprehensive plan. I call it progressive plan. That's not the same word. Comprehensive plan. We were denied for a second time. We had Tara and I met with OPA and with Region 15, who did our grant application for us. Met with them last week and got the scoring back. As a board now, we need to decide what we want to do. We can apply again to OPA this quarter. We can wait and apply again to OPA the fourth quarter, or we could just put it on hold and try to seek other funding options. I'm, I'm in favor of not applying this quarter. Take a break and try to see if we can find other options. And if not, then we can apply again the fourth quarter.
Are you looking for a vote or what do you want?
I don't think, I don't think it requires a vote. I just wanted to.
Does it cost us anything to apply?
It does not, it does not cost us anything to apply. We only pay them if we're awarded. So, I mean, you can put a cost of time. You know, we put a lot of time into it and got no return on that investment. But it, no, it doesn't, it doesn't cost a fee to apply.
Were we even close on the running anyway?
We were closer.
We were closer. Yeah, we went up, what were we, 50 points below being considered fundable? And each time we meet with OPA, they give us all the feedback and Region 15 makes notes and they make, you know, they made all the changes and really beefed it up. And then, and then when we met with them the second time to go over it, it's like, it's like the rules change every time we submit. It's like a moving target. It's never the same.
Kind of feel like it's a way this would have sort of to.
Well, I definitely feel like for the block grant it is, which is also a conversation that we had with our state senator. Like, all right.
You can't submit what they want when you don't know what they want because they're gonna change.
It changes. What they want changes every time.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah. So I mean, I still feel a comprehensive, a new comprehensive plan is very important to our town. You know, when grant opportunities come along and we get calls very last minute from different people. You know, we got this grant opportunity. Do you have a project? Well, we know we do. We still haven't documented. So without the documentation, it's very difficult to apply for grants, which is why we wanted to go down this road to begin with, on the comprehensive plan.
We've got, we've got some time.
Yes.
Did Region 15 make the recommendation?
No, they said it's up to us, whatever we want to do. If we, if we were gonna do it this quarter, I mean, we'd have to schedule a public hearing next week. So we could, I just, I don't know. I just feel like we should take a break and for a quarter and see if there's something else we can come up with. Is that okay?
That's fine. I'm okay with one quarter.
Okay. I mean, I don't say, I'm not saying we don't apply again.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with one quarter. Try to find something else. Maybe definitely go back to the next quarter.
I have some other ideas, but I haven't substantiated them yet. So.
They'll give us some time.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So that was the OPA grant on the new business. Last, was that last Monday?
Last Monday, yes.
Last Monday, we interviewed three candidates that applied for the open council position that we have that was vacated by Tim Linas. And we interviewed, it was, it was livestreamed. We have people here who want to thank everybody, the three candidates who applied. Appreciate your, your interest in helping the town and being a part of it. Everybody, Tim, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Very good, very good interview.
Yes.
Very good interviews from all three. Made it hard.
Very strong. Now that it's over, I'm gonna open up floor for motion.
It was a hard decision.
I think Tara really surprised me. Like, you interviewed really well. I just have a surprise. Like, you interviewed well. I want to talk to you again full time. I just, you know, you interviewed really well. Krista, I talked to you before. I was really impressed. For me, it's hard to pick between those two, but with our state board of accounts audit coming up, just with what our needs are right now, I'm gonna make a motion. Hey Krista, our next council member.
I have a motion on the floor to, can I, Krista Hallbrader?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. And I really do appreciate, I really appreciate all three of you applying and being interested. And I hope, I hope you'll run. That's what I hope. Tara, are we ready to, are we prepared? Krista, with you?
We are now. Thank you, Gabby.
I swear to God. Are you ready? All right, come on up. Hallbrader?
You might need to help her spell that.
One L. Yeah, all right. Yeah. Right, yeah. All right. Repeat after me. I, Krista Hallbrader.
I, Krista Hallbrader.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As town council member.
As town council member.
According to the law.
According to the law.
In the best of my ability.
In the best of my ability.
So that's what we got. Thank you. Welcome. Krista, have a seat. Oh, that's fine. We have a water jet there. So, and if you don't, if you have a bowling, that's fine, but we wanted to welcome you up here. All right. Next on the list. Okay, we were, recently, we were sharing a resource between town hall and our streets department. Andrew. Torres?
Terus.
Terus, sorry. I just called him as Andrew. Was our utility clerk. He was working here in town hall. And then as Cody needed help on the utility side, Andrew was working part time for Cody and part time for here. After some decision, Tara, Tara realized that she really is okay with her and just Tara Gabby here at town hall doing the work. So Andrew has shown interest and Cody was very interested in having Andrew go full time for the street department. So that's what we are going to recommend tonight. If anybody has a, any questions, concerns about that? No? Okay.
Nope. I'd make a motion to do that, or do we need to make a motion? I don't know.
Make a motion, yeah.
Make a motion that we move Andrew to, I'm not even trying to say the name, to full time for the street department or utility department.
Okay.
And with that increases pay to, was it 1450? To 1450.
Okay. And that was within the range that we have in our salary ordinance?
It is.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. There you go, Cody.
Officially official.
I said, there you go. It's official. Andrew's, Andrew's all yours. All right. Tara?
Okay, with that being said, with it just being Gabby and I, she's been here, her two year anniversary will be in September.
Two years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I am asking that her hourly rate is bumped up a little bit. She's currently at 1550. Our budget is up to 17. I don't, I wouldn't want to max her out, but I would ask that she gets.
Would you say she's at now?
1550. I think, I think after her six month evaluation, we favor 50 cent raise, but I can't remember what, like.
But it's been over a year since.
It's been over a year.
We gave her a raise in June, 20, beginning of June of 2024.
Okay.
It's been a year. Do you have a recommendation, Tara? What, 50 cents more?
I would say no less than 50 cents more.
About 75 cents more on the hour. Just do 13 percent more. Oh, she wants to do 13. Okay.
Well, I'm just trying. Not that I want to do 13. I just wanna. Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion. We, we have your raise to $16 an hour. That's 3% raise.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right, Alexis. Community Center small banquet room.
Yeah, I'm asking for money.
You're always asking for money.
No. I want to preface this though, for everyone on the livestream, everyone out there. It's money that can only be spent, it's from, so it goes into, it's just from a non-reverting fund. So it's funds that can only be spent on, on community space, like parks and recreation. It can't, you can't go to the water. It can't go to wastewater. So it has to be spent this way. But anyway, I said we were remodeling our small banquet room. And if you've seen the large banquet room, we've got a new floor in there. And it's like an epoxy floor. And the floor down there, if you know, it's an old gym, or it's, it's an old school. You probably all know this. I didn't know this. I'm not from here. But the, the floor in the old, in the banquet room and this old, the smaller one is very uneven. It's like concrete under there. We started taking the carpet out. And it, the, the room goes like this. So all the tables and chairs are like this. We'll prop them up. So it needs to be like ground down and then leveled out and then this epoxy stuff and sealed. The large banquet room was done, I want to say like six years ago maybe? It was the previous board, but it, it looks really nice, but the seal has come off. So I had a, I've had companies come in and give us a quote to do the small banquet room, like leveled out and do the same epoxy seal on, you know, four in the seal. But also do the large banquet room, seal, fix it and seal it good because the flex and paint are kind of coming up. So I feel like it all needs to be done at once. I tried to get three quotes, but I could only get two. I couldn't ever get the third.
What is the hallway in that? Would you not want to do the hallway at the same time?
It's too expensive. Did you look at the quotes?
Yeah, it was expensive.
The first quote from Sullivan's Concrete Coating was $21,000. That was to fix the large banquet room and do the small with all the leveling and everything. Now we got a second from Five Star Concrete Coatings, smaller business. And if somebody knows the third one that they think would come out and give a.
Is that a guy from Winslow, that Five Star? Or where's he from? I think I know who that is.
I'm not sure. He says. Yeah, he says he's Winslow. I don't know. He just has his website and a phone number.
Yeah.
Call, have some time with him. Anyway. This quote is $14,736 for the small room and then to fix the large room is $3,896. But we can cut down some on the small room, like his carpet removal was $1,096, which we've already, I know his carpet removal was $1,371, which we've already started doing. And then there was like some repair chipping that the guys have already started doing. So I'm asking, we budgeted to use 30,000 of this non-reverting fund this year. We have, we used part of it for, we got a grant for the pickleball fence, but we didn't have enough to finish it. So we used a little bit for that. We used part of it to get a new awning on the outside of the community center. We have about 19,000 left to use this year. So I'm asking for, I'm guessing around 15,000 to get this flowing in or to not exceed the remaining 19,000. Because, I mean, we paid for this, the community center ourselves, but you know how projects are? Like, I guess it was like, what, four months ago? The community center, the back wall was collapsing. It was actually like six or seven inches lower, the backside floor the forehead collapsed. So we had a company come in and drill holes and they shoot this foam in there slowly. And it was supposed to be like 10,000, but when they got in there and started doing it, there were another problems. It was like 13,000 or something. Which we, the community center, we had enough, like donations, stuff. We covered it ourselves. But so when I ask for money, I need a little wiggle.
So you're wanting a motion that says approve 15,000, not to exceed 19,000? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I make that motion then.
For the small banquet room and to fix the top coat on the large banquet room.
A second and a half. All right, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Alexis, can you just talk a little bit about, you said that rentals are up. Can you just give us an overview of how your rentals look and? you just give us an overview of how your rentals look and, um, you know, just because we're taking this money out of the dollar, it doesn't mean that you guys aren't bringing money in and, and reusing what you're making?
Yeah, it's gotten better, I mean, we have the keyless entry, so that helps, like, I can, I can walk and unlock the doors from my phone. We get a lot of last-minute rentals here lately, which, just, we get, we can, you can rent by the hour now, I guess, you haven't been able to do that for a while, but that was just insurance that we had to work out. Um, so we get a lot of people, there's a group of guys that message me a lot at night, seven, eight at night, just, can we go in and play for a couple hours? We got a donation box, put your mind in the donation box. And I can send you a picture, I'll turn the light, do the lights and everything, um, but we've got the tarps now, so it is a little harder, because like, um, I let some people set up for birthday party Friday night with the tarps and bounce house, and then I had the guy, some guys text me, they want to play ball, and I was like, well, there's a bounce house in there, so.
You can play the bounce house, the bounce house.
So rentals.
They're up.
Are up because of the biggest house, um, I think they're up in the summer because it's hot, and then people want a cool place, so.
And the banquet room, they're getting used.
The large banquet room gets a lot, the small banquet room doesn't, but I think just because it doesn't look very good. I know people use it, Amy uses it for photos every year. Um, I have a lot of graduation parties, like my May is already almost booked out on the Saturday Sunday for the banquet room. Thanksgiving's booked out, Christmas is always booked out, people will pay for the banquet room and the gym at once, so they can, you know, they can eat, and adults can eat, and then the kids can play in the gym, and we've got the security cameras in there now, so it makes it nice, to kind of, you know, compile things, but you just message us through the Facebook page, and, um, I can email you a rental contract, and you can drop it and your payment in the drop box out here, or can you get it at the community center, you need to see it, get it that way, and then I always set it up the night before with your trash cans and all that, and it's just open for you when you want to go.
Thank you. All right, solar lights for pickleball court, Alexis.
Oh, I don't, um, I don't need that many.
Okay.
I'm not going to ask you for any, because of Masons, because we are donating it, so.
Masons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Would you have what you give to me?
Yeah, that's right. All right. Um, couple ordinance, one that's an update and one that's a new ordinance that we're going to read through and discuss. Uh, the first one is our fireworks ordinance. Hit my miss, hang on.
It's right here.
Okay.
I didn't know if you want to read all of it, it's going to be a lot of reading if you had to do both.
Um, we have a fireworks ordinance on the books, um, and we were kindly, um, informed that it did not match the state's laws, so we're going to revise the one that we have to match what the Indiana state law says for fireworks. Amy, you want to go over what the changes are?
Uh, yeah, we, um, we didn't have all the dates on there, because I never really know anybody to use fireworks on Memorial Day or Labor Day, but we had to add in, uh, Memorial Day, Labor Day, and we had to specify on the dates, like, June the twenty-ninth through July the third are days that you can do fireworks, and then it is from five to, to.
Two hours.
Two hours before.
After.
Or two hours after midnight.
Sunset.
Or sunset. I don't know why I said that.
The next one's midnight.
That's why, I got on the wrong line, and then on Fourth of July, it's nine AM to midnight. Yes, I was reading from the wrong line, I apologize. And then on July the fifth through the ninth, then it is five PM to two hours after sunset. So, and then we, of course, added Labor Day, and it's nine AM to midnight, and then New Year's Eve, nine AM to, actually, it goes past midnight, because you shoot the fireworks off midnight, so one AM. So, so anyway, that's what the specifications are, to make it match what we have, otherwise it didn't really change that much.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we approve in the first review.
Okay. Changes to the.
It's just adding some stuff, tweaking it.
Yep. Okay.
Am I okay for the motion on the floor?
I'll stay.
And a second? All in there? Let me get it.
How big a matter?
Aye.
We're all not really excited about fireworks, because it messes with our critical.
Yep.
Shoot a wall, whatever.
All right.
And you have the other one.
Okay, and then we have an ordinance that we, we're gonna, I'm gonna do three readings on this one before we, um, make a motion to approve it. This is a new ordinance for us, we've been discussing these past two years. Now that we have five board members, uh, you know, Terry did mention in his interview that they got it to where the town council elections are the same as federal elections, so that we didn't have to pay for our special election in town, uh, which is great. Uh, one thing that we ran into when we came on board, me, when I came on board, um, the terms weren't staggered, so we had three new members, um, all at once, and it, that's hard. Uh, so we've been studying, how can we stagger the terms for the town council going forward?
The big thing was, we didn't want to not follow the general election, because otherwise the town has to pay a big bunch of money to hold an election.
Yes.
So that's why it was confusing, we didn't know how to do it, so finally, I found an ordinance that would work, you know, and I had to tweak it to match that.
That's exactly. So I'll read through the whole thing, if I have to, but in, just to, um, explain it, Amy, it's. Uh, let me read it, and then we'll go.
You can read it if you want.
No, I'll read it, then we'll go through it. All right. Ordinance changing the term of council members and town clerk treasurer and establishing staggered election times within the town of Winslow, Indiana. Whereas all five members of the town council and clerk treasurer for the town of Winslow, Indiana are simultaneously up for election to four-year terms, and whereas this pattern of elections on occasions has caused most, if not all, town council members and the clerk treasurer to be newly elected at the same time, and whereas the complete turnover of elected officials has on occasion resulted in the lack of continuity of leadership for the citizens of the town of Winslow, and whereas the town council has determined it is in the best interest of the citizens of the town of Winslow to have the terms of the members of the town council and the clerk treasurer staggered to provide for the overlapping of terms and experienced elected officials, and whereas pursuant to subject to IC Code three dash ten dash seven dash two dot nine, the town council may adopt an ordinance providing for the staggered elections. Now therefore, may resolve by the town council of the town of Winslow, Indiana, that in order to adopt the changes to the town code necessary to effectuate the implementa, implementation of staggered terms for the town council members and town clerk treasurer in accordance with applicable Indiana election law Title I, Section one point oh two and one point oh five, are repealed and completely replaced by the following provisions. Okay. Terms of town council members pursuant to IC Code three dash one oh seven dash two point seven C one, the Winslow Town Council members and the clerk treasurer of Winslow, who will be elected, shall serve a term of four years. The current town council members shall continue to serve in such capacity until their respective term expires on January first, twenty twenty-seven, or until their replacement is elected during a municipal election held during a general election year. B, implementation staggered terms. An election for all five town council positions shall be held during the municipal election to be held on the first Tuesday following the first Monday in November twenty twenty-six. All municipal elections will be held concurrently with general elections. Number two, an election for all five town council positions shall be held during the general election on the first Tuesday following the first Monday in November twenty twenty-six. A, the two town council members elected and receiving the most votes in the November twenty twenty-six municipal general election and the town clerk shall serve four years, four, shall serve four-year terms commencing on January first, twenty twenty-seven. B, the remaining three town council members elected in the November twenty twenty-six general election shall, shall serve two-year terms commencing on January first, twenty twenty-seven. C, for elections after the full implementation of staggered election cycles as provided in subsection B above, each newly elected town council member shall serve a term of four years. Successors, in the event that a town council member or clerk treasurer shall for any reason become disqualified due to moving out of town limits or otherwise unable to complete the four-year term to which the member or clerk treasurer was elected, a successor shall be selected according to applicable Indiana election laws to complete the unexpired term. Municipal election, A, the town council shall consist of five individuals duly nominated and elected per section one point oh five point one zero, zero one zero, of the town code and applicable state election laws. B, each town council member and town clerk treasurer shall be elected for a four-year term and at large by all the voters of the town, with the exception of the time when the process of staggering of terms is completed. C, except as otherwise provided in section one point oh five point zero one zero, of the town code, elections for town council members shall be in even years on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, with three town council members being elected in municipal elections beginning November twenty twenty-eight, and two town council members and the town, and the town clerk treasurer being elected in general elections beginning November twenty thirty. This ordinance may not be repealed earlier than twelve years after the adoption of the ordinance. Ordinance may only be repealed in a year preceding a municipal election held at the time described in IC Code three dash ten dash six dash five, as amended from time to time. This ordinance will be filed with Pike County Clerk for election purposes.
We're going to explain it.
Yes. So. The next election would be for all five positions and clerk treasurer. And what, I already forgot what I read.
Well, the.
Okay, the two, the two elected officials with the most votes would serve four years.
And the town clerk.
And the town clerk.
Four years, the other would serve.
The other three would serve two years. That way, we're staggered.
It's fair, and it's got continuity.
Yes.
Then after, then after that is four.
Then, yes, that, yes, we get caught up.
And we're not getting any cost money that we're having to spend for election stuff.
Yes, we would not pay for stuff.
And that's what they were doing previously, long, you know, a couple town councils ago.
So, that's what it means, and we'll read it in the next two meetings before we adopt it. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right. Can we take turns reading? Next time it's the list.
You only volunteer, so.
All right. Community needs list for Region fifteen.
Um, I can pull it up on my computer, but do you want to do it if we're going to wait a little while?
Well, this is different.
Okay. Uh, yeah, let's pull it up.
So, Region fifteen, Indiana Region fifteen is our local, um.
Forgot to print it out.
Regional planning, vision, thank you, Dean. Um, and they have, every, every year they publish a list of town objectives, objectives for the town, and they publish those, and those are often used for, uh, grant applications also. So we need to go through the list.
I'm looking forward to.
And see if we need to amend that for them.
Sherry, it was Sherry, right? Sherry Taylor? Oh, sorry. Here, I'll have a, pull it over here.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want to get my computer out. Okay.
And it's nicely color-coded?
Yes, it is. Okay. For economic development, and some of these have already been done, and we just need to mark them down as done. Increased broadband availability or, and/or quality within the county.
I think they had something that they did with that, that's how come we got spectrum out of the, part of the town, and variety, or part of the county.
So we think that's done? Okay. Uh, downtown revitalization, new streetlights.
We need to.
We need to keep that on there. Infrastructure, water meter replacement, that's done. Uh, water line improvement, wastewater improvements, stormwater improvements, water tower improvement.
Yeah, we still need that.
Wastewater expansion to support job creation.
I don't really know what that means. We have to ask her what that means.
Well, okay. What, say?
Just add more infrastructure, show you get a dozen cent.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We've got landlocked.
I'll talk to Sherry and just. Uh, transportation, road improvements and sidewalk improvements.
Definitely.
Planning a comprehensive financial plan, a new comprehensive plan. Workforce housing. Market-grade housing. Downtown revitalization, annexation plan. Updates filed here, park master plan.
We've done that already, haven't we?
No. And a community center plan. And those are both on your list right now, right?
Yeah, we're, we're just going with the community center plan for right now.
Okay. Community facilities, a blight housing program, yes. Community center computer lab.
Really? Kind of, there used to be one, we kind of talked about the library, well, has some availability, and they're able to keep up the technology.
So we'll get rid of that.
Yeah, there is some of that.
Need more. Like to get more programming, we're kind of focused on programming right now, like some fitness classes and.
Okay. Uh, senior housing, community center improvements, a youth room in the community center?
And then the gym?
We haven't talked about it, but they get in there now.
Okay. Park playground equipment, lighting, bathrooms, ball field upgrades, walking and hiking trails.
Which we've been working on that some, that still needs more work.
Yeah.
And the bathrooms, I think that.
Yeah.
Still needs work, and we got a new toilet.
Yeah. I think they're talking about public facilities that are open all the time.
Child leaving the room.
I know.
Everybody just tears them up.
Well, they, they say you can put metal ones in or something that can be torn up. I don't know.
Owner occupancy.
In the outhouse, maybe.
Which I, we need to keep that.
What about the last one there?
Public safety and services, storm sirens.
Do we not have storm sirens?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the community center.
I don't know why it's, I don't know why it was on the list, that's why I asked.
You want to put a campsite in the mudballs? You're like, leveled out.
We can add that to the community facilities.
We have electric and water in back there already, that'd be kind of nice to have an option for that.
I'll ask Sherry where that might fall in.
It would go in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I talked to him about, we gotta get like that.
Okay. All right, so that was that list, that's good that we got some that we can part off, but. All right, uh, Rose Holman, Civil Engineering. Listen, yeah, Tara?
Um, I got a call on Thursday from, um, I, I guess he's an alumni of the Civil Engineering Program at Rose Holman, um, they're looking for senior design projects. Basically, they, um, it says they're interested in service learning projects for communities, charities, municipalities, state agencies, um, and what he said is like anything, like, you know, sidewalks, streets, water, wastewater, like any kind of civil engineering project, it doesn't have to be funded, it doesn't have to be active, but they're, it, he wanted to see if we would be willing to see if it could qualify for their senior project.
Would, wonder if, uh, like hiking trails or something, if the.
Yeah. I, he, it doesn't have a detailed list, he just sent me kind of the overall.
Oh, yes.
And I.
Yeah, we're, we're welcome to.
So, okay.
Pre-engineering something rather than.
I personally think it'd be a good opportunity to, at least get our.
Well, somebody from Rose Holman figures out where Winslow, Indiana is.
There's been some graduates.
There's a lot of Rose Holman grads.
Okay. Well, that's good.
All right. All right, so that was everything on our agenda, I want to open it up now, uh, for patient concerns. I do ask, now that we're live streaming, if you have a concern you want to discuss, that you come up front, so that the video can pick you up and state your name, um, and then you can tell us what your concern is.
Definitely, because we got to be able to hear them.
I have.
I think she had a hearing last time.
I do have some people signed up, but knowing that you have to come up. but knowing that you have to come up front, I don't know if that changed your minds.
No.
Okay. All right, come on up.
Speak loud.
All right. Come on up. If you, if you want to sit.
Yes.
We'll get you a seat, okay.
No, I'm not a resident, but Winslow. I have been when I was 18. Until I was 18, my sister lives in town, and I'm there quite frequently. My name is on the property.
Your name?
Lana Brewer. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Since 2022, we've had a lot of incidents with dogs killing cats. Last week, on Saturday, I went to pick up my sister who lives on Cherry and Union. And I called her, and I said, I'll be there a little bit. I got there. Our neighbor, her neighbor Barry was over there. She had had, it was the Torres's dogs that he come to get the one dog. That's a big fat, like me, flyable retriever. I don't prevent her to fly.
Herman is his name.
Working with, yeah. It was with another dog that looked pit bullish. I'm not gonna say it is. It's black and white. And it was going in after my sister's cats in her fenced-in backyard. So she called Barry to holler him to help her. The dog, she shut the fence, and the dog went over her fence. And the Torres man, Barry knew the Torres. I'm sorry, I don't know his first name. I've just heard of it. Oh, is it? I'm just always talking about Torres. I got called in high school. Because I'm not well. So I apologize for that. Anyway, so Barry called him. He coming and was looking for his dog. And we saw him, that him, the dog and the other dog was up by Kevin Gayheart's old place. And he come and get it, said he was sorry. Well, I don't know how many times, is Bill still there? Bill, how many times have you went to that residence of that gentleman's for that dog loose?
We could back him like...
Four or five times. Because of the, the week, and there was one dead cat, which was Jessie Edgerton's that goes between my sisters. And, you know, it's like an eight or 10-year-old cat. So, and I wasn't gonna bring graphic pictures, but I did, because that's terrible. But I'm, I'm telling you, it breaks their back. Their eyes are popped out. My husband's had to bury them. And, you know, it's just a bad, bad deal. But anyway, so we called Bill. I called Steve. Steve was on vacation. But, the way I look at it, and the Friday before, my sister asked Christie if she'd seen any dogs run loose because she had four dead cats. You could tell because there's not a big, you know, they're sloven dogs. They've shaken with the death. Their vertebrae's broke. They have brain bleeds. It's a horrible death. I mean, not that I know, but I've seen the three dogs. And I'm, I'm not saying anything bad about the dogs. Because, you know, I love my dog too. And we had a dog that killed cats. These days in a pen, we put up deer stuff. If this person has been approached four times, I'd say once, okay, July 4th gets out. We had a woman that was abandoned by the Perrys that chased cars. Monica bought a shock collar. We put a fence, put him in a fence. Then my husband and Monica put up electric fence because he chased cars. That was a problem. But, and I know that. I'll give somebody a warning. I, that's fine. But I really do think that the bond should be, and I think there should be more. And I don't think it should be the dog's fault. And you said something about putting the money towards the, you know, capture of the dogs. I would rather put the money towards Bill's salary to help the board. And, and it's not the dog's fault. The people should have to pay. And I've looked up an ordinance in Indiana, and that dog that come and killed my sister on her property, that, they can get arrested. My sister's cat. Well, and just, and like the traverses. I don't need to call people, have people watching because, you know, my sister's like, don't say any names. But how many times have you been up the traverses about those pommel rankings?
We all have stories.
No, I know.
Multiple times. And you know, I know they love their dogs. And, and my sister walks her dog. It's a 31-pound pig. It's like Peppa the Pig on a leash. And those two dogs approached her the other day. And they come down and eat her the cat food, which is fine. That's no big deal. But this boy dog is very aggressive. He started growling at her dog. She's had a wreck about eight or, I don't know how many weeks ago. She had surgery on her wrist. She had to pick up that 31-pound dog of hers and carry it.
Yeah.
And, and that's just, you know, just unacceptable. And, and I know the people that the dog killed the cats. I know they love their dog. I know they do. I'm sure they do. They wouldn't have it. But that's like me setting a panther in their fence and saying, watch your dog get shot to death. You know, if you love your animal, you just don't need to do that.
Yeah.
Everybody deserves the opportunity to have a pet and have their pet reset.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I mean, even if you quadruple the bond, like I said, it's not the dog's fault. You know, you have to take it, you know, and Terry's dealt with that before, I know, when he was the dog catcher. You know, one morning, and then, hey, you get your fence fixed. And like Christie and all was like, abandonment of cats. Well, I know the Perrys that lived up where the tracks is. I'm not trying to say names, but that's all I... Well, that's how I, really. But they abandoned Norman, the dog Trace had that chased the cars. They abandoned probably five or six cats at trees, and Jessie got fixed. And you pay to feed them. You pay to get them fixed. You pay for medicine. And, you know, and then some dog comes on your property and kills them.
And then it has a hundred and some odd dollars down the drain. Every animal that they've killed is actually weeks weren't fixed.
Yeah.
And that's a lot of money.
Especially when you don't have a lot.
We do it because irresponsible pet owners, they get these kittens or get cats, and then they leave them, they move. Any animal I have or she had, we never picked out it, no. We didn't go pick out an animal. They get dumped. Or they have kittens, and they all come, you know, and we're gonna treat them.
The people that abandoned them, you can see them on social media six months earlier going, oh, look at our new kitten. And they look at it a little bit. It's, it's terrible. But, and I just, it's not the animal's fault. They're gonna be animals. I mean, that's just how it is. But, but it's, it's just a cruel death. And like I said, Indiana law has it where if they kill it, they can be arrested. They can get charged with cruelty to animals, and they'll have to pay for your animal and stuff. So, but I seen you guys had a leash law. I looked that up.
Yeah, we do.
Six-foot leash law.
Yeah.
And I mean, I appreciate Bill and Steve and everybody that takes our calls. I mean, they were crazy cat ladies.
They were.
We are. But, you know, we have empathy for animals. You know, I mean, somebody's got to.
Well, and I, I've known, I've, I've known that, you know, Teresa and every, you know, everybody on that side of town that has been paying to fix cats are on theirs, and that's very appreciative.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and you know, like I said also, I mean, if you see somebody leaving and they abandoned their animals.
Yeah, they should be fined too. Yeah, yeah.
Animal cruelty. It's animal cruelty.
Well, just following the felony offense.
Yeah. Abandon it.
I think that's all I need.
Well, I'm gonna say this though.